Okay, well, good evening everyone. My name is Howard Colker. I'm the interim superintendent here at Cape Elizabeth. And I am going to call this meeting to order, it's a special meeting once a year as we get ready to appoint people to various committee responsibilities to include the chair and vice chair of the school board that happens tonight. And this is Tuesday, December 12th. And I would call this meeting to order at 7:01. And ask that everybody please join in for our pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
I would, at this time, entertain a motion for the election of school board chair.
I move that we elect Susanna Mizal Habs as school board chair.
Are there any other nominations for chair? Then I'll say that those nominations are closed, and I'll ask for a vote. Was there a second to that?
I will second.
Not that we need one for elections, actually. You don't need one. So, okay, so all of those that are in support of the motion to elect Susanna as the chair, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, that's unanimous. Congratulations. The meeting is yours.
Okay, great.
But before you do, is this the time when we do, I guess we wait for another vote before the dramatic?
I need to have another seat available.
Okay.
Okay, so, more with gipples. May I have a motion, I mean a nomination, please, for vice chair?
I nominate Heather Altenberg for the board vice chair.
Any other nominations? Okay, all in favor? This is so funny, Susan.
Move these guys around.
Okay. All right. So, moving on to the appointment of committees. May I have a motion to standing committees?
I would like to nominate John Volz for finance chair, and Elizabeth Seifreis as policy chair, with Nassar Sheer and Hope Straw as members of the policy committee.
Any other nominations? Yep. Any other names? No? All those in favor? May I have a nomination for the committee appointments?
I would like to nominate Hope Straw for past general advisory board, John Volz, and Kimberly Carr for student wellness committee, Nassar Sheer for technology steering, and Hope Straw for transportation appeals. Buildings and grounds, I would like to nominate Kimberly Carr. And for negotiations, I would like to nominate Hope Straw and Elizabeth Seifreis.
Any other nominations? All those in favor? Moving along to advisory committee, may I have nominations, please?
Yes, I would like to nominate John Volz and Nassar Sheer for legislative liaison. And for dropout prevention committee, Kimberly Carr. For calendar 2018-2019 academic year, Kimberly Carr and myself, Heather Altenberg. And do I nominate you? I don't need to nominate? Do I still need to nominate Susanna? And nominate Susanna Mizal Habs for the town comprehensive plan 2019 committee.
And one more, the spur wing.
And we're adding on to it the spur wing building committee, myself, Heather Altenberg, and John Volz.
Any other nominations? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, moving on, number two, adjustments to the agenda. Okay. So, we're done, we'll move on to three, approval of school board minutes. May I have a motion?
I move to approve the school board members' minutes. Excuse me, do I have to go through all? Can you just say as listed?
As listed. I second.
All those in favor? Comments by student representatives?
Representative. Hi, everyone. So, Allison's sick today. She wasn't able to make it, but I just have a couple really short updates about sports and extracurriculars mainly. So, the boys and girls basketball teams had games on Friday. Those were their first games of the winter season, and they lost both, unfortunately. Boys and girls lost. But they played Greeley, and Greeley is very good and very competitive in basketball. So, that wasn't anything that they were really upset about. Boys hockey had a game on Saturday in Gorham at USM, and they won. So, that was exciting. Speech and debate, we had a meet in Poland on Saturday. It was the Nutcracker Invitational. Debate did really well, and so did speech. The awards were actually cut short because that was the day we had a snowstorm. So, we got three, four rounds in before lunch, which is, usually you do two rounds before lunch and two rounds after, but we did all four rounds before lunch, and then we're on the buses by two, and home by three-ish. And usually we get home from Poland around eight. So, that was a big deal. We left at 6:45 in the morning. So, always really fun, leaving before the sun comes up. And mock trial is the big, big news of this week, month, year. Obviously, they won their eighth straight state tournament.
Very impressive.
Yeah, incredibly impressive. They're an unbelievable team. They have some incredible, incredible talent. And they will have, they will go to nationals in May. So, that's the next step for them. And lastly, the robotics team had a meet at Paul Dale High School on November 18th. I believe that was their last meet. And one of our team, one of the robotics teams from Cape placed first, and one of them won an award for outstanding design. So, those are, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, of course.
Drive home safely.
Okay. Are you sure?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, I'm just curious, where are these nationals? Where do they meet?
So, for nationals, I think this year it's in Nevada. And the whole team, usually it's during the weekend of prom. So, the last two years, the students who've gone to nationals for mock trial have actually had to miss prom. But this year, I think it's being changed because seniors only have two weeks of STP. So, prom is being moved so that mock trial, the mock trial participants won't miss prom.
That's nice.
So, it's in May in Nevada.
Good, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Have a great night. You too. Thank you. Drive safely.
Thank you.
Okay. Number five, comments from public on the agenda items. Okay, well, moving on. Number six, communications. A, we've got the budget review process. Catherine is not here.
May I speak, please? So, you see in your packet a proposal from Catherine about the budget season. And what she's done is taken some dates that, or some workshop nights that you have coming up, starting in January. And then below that is another little box, and it's dates that are set with the town council. The dates in that lower box with town council are firm. Those are dates that the town must meet, and they're scheduling. So, we need to ensure that we honor that and are prepared for those dates. The dates in the upper box are a bit problematic. We've already identified topics for the January and the February workshop. The January is a meeting with architects, which we hope are well attended. We hope to also have it filmed to talk to the board and have a conversation about what they're seeing and thinking about renovations to our schools. And then in February, the meeting is dedicated mostly to hearing from four or five of our employees that went to a training in how to respond to a crisis or an emergency in a school, a new way of thinking about that called ALICE, A-L-I-C-E. And our employees are going to come and talk to you about that. But what we're feeling is if we think it has a place in our response plan that until now we haven't really thought about. So, it's, again, those two meetings are kind of, are booked right now. So, we need to find new dates and to include a half-day budget workshop. And I just don't know if you want to have that. It doesn't, it could be at a date, time is convenient for you all. It doesn't have to be exactly from 5:00 to 8:00. I mean, it could be a morning meeting, an afternoon, an evening, it's you all to figure out what works for you. But it's an opportunity for us to really have a lot of time to converse about, explain, and discuss the budget. Whether then having these short periods of time, four hours and a half, two hours, gives us more time to get into some real conversations. So, we hope that we can find a day for that. So, maybe tonight's not the right time for it, but sometime soon, we need to try and find some dates and then put it in our calendar.
Okay.
I'd like to just advocate for keeping the half-day or the extended budget workshop because although it was long, and it can be hard to listen and absorb that long, I think it was incredibly valuable to hear all departments, so you get the big picture and see everything together, so that as we go forward with question and answer.
Right.
We have a full picture.
Right.
Elizabeth, you're suggesting, though, on a different date? You're not suggesting?
Different date, yeah. Maybe like February 6th and March 6th, or something like that.
Are those Tuesdays?
Those are Tuesdays.
Okay.
Okay. Great, thank you. Next, we would have the principals' updates. Since the weather's horrible, the principals are home. Next is the, on the agenda under communications, is the elementary and secondary education act application.
Right, may I speak to that?
Yes, please.
So, we receive around $43,000 from the federal government through the state to support our school system. And those monies are dedicated right now to paying for one, part of one of our teachers' salaries who works with children that needed additional support in mathematics at Pon Cove. There's money spent on a contract with what's called the Great Schools Partnership, and working with our teachers and administrators on implementing the what's called proficiency-based education. And I believe the rest of the money goes toward supporting, consultants are coming in to work with our teachers on how to effectively work with children that need additional support and guidance, I think, perhaps on an emotional and behavioral level. So, that's how that money gets spent, that $43,000. This year, they're starting to require us to have a proposal that is developed with the input of a lot of people. One way about that is to form another committee. Kathy felt that we didn't need another committee. We largely know how that money has been spent, and we think it's working well. And so, she's met with groups of people within that in small, either one-on-one or in small groups, and talked about these. And so, that's, it's not, I think it's a stretch to say that it's been a formal committee, which is not exaggeration, is that she received feedback from a lot of people that are on that list. So, that's kind of what it is right now.
Great, thank you. Which brings us now to the superintendent's report.
Okay. So, let's see here. Well, the first thing I want to mention to you is that I received a notice recently from one of our teachers named Joni Hewitt. She's our English language learner teacher. She resigned effective the 8th of December, which was last Friday. And fortunately, we have an employee in our district who's an ed tech. Her name is Marlene Potter, who is a certified teacher, and one of her credentials is English Language Learners, which is kind of amazing to me, that we have somebody here with that credential. But she was interviewed for that job temporarily, fill us out for the rest of the year by Jason from Pon Cove and Kathy from the central office. And they felt that she was very qualified for that job, again, just to get us from here to the end of the year. That job will be posted, and certainly Ms. Potter would be encouraged to apply. But we'll interview as many qualified candidates as we can, and fill that permanently for next school year. But we aren't losing that. These are not easy jobs to fill. So, fortunately, our students aren't going to really miss, they'll be in a big gap for them in terms of services. So, I want you to be aware of that. Also, the state department of education is doing what they can to promote cooperation and collaboration between districts in Maine, in part to be more efficient, and in part to save some money, and in part to, I think, get people to think more as regions than individual districts. And they've come up with these grants, they're called regional service center applications. And I guess that, if I understand it correctly, that if you don't apply for one of these applications, that you could lose some of your funding. And if you do, you're at least not held, you aren't going to lose anything, and if you are awarded one, you may gain something. Only around, less than 30 districts actually put forward an application to cooperate. We started very small with Scarborough. I spoke to their superintendent, Julie Kugnberger, very nice person, by the way. And she suggested that maybe Scarborough and Cape continue to acknowledge the shared relationship we have for food services, and purchasing, and staffing, and training, but also maybe add in our custodial for training and for supplies. A lot of money we spend on cleaning supplies, and paper products, and so forth, and so maybe, so she and I, pretty, she did almost all the work. I think I said yes. And so, we put in an application. And then today, we received a notice from a larger group in the area referred to as the Southern Maine Regional Service Center. And we received a notice from Katie Haas, who is the superintendent in Kennebunk. And a number of districts, something like 12, have come together for those exact two areas of concentration, and asked us if we want to join them. So, we're meeting with Katie sometime next week, Julie and I. And it's very likely that we'll join up with that group. It would enhance our chances of getting funding, and we might do a better job of getting some real savings. I question, on such a small scale, what we're really going to save, but maybe with 14, 15 districts together, maybe we would get a better break on pricing. So, I just want you to know that if this goes forward, I'll come back to you. You would need to apparently take a vote to approve of this relationship. And I would do that at your next meeting. So, that's kind of where that is.
Thank you, but that's.
You're very welcome. So, let's see. I would want you to know that we are doing our best to continue to fine-tune our emergency response plan, whether there's an emergency in our schools. We've been doing what some people call these tabletop exercises. We're meeting, and we're sitting down with administrators, and with police. And next week, we're bringing in somebody from the county emergency response program to join us. And we go through a hypothetical situation and talk about, okay, if this were the case, and we just put somebody, we say, okay, if this is what, you just heard what you think are gunshots outside, what do you do? And we have a plan, we critique that, we have cell phones, we have drill mode. It's, so, we're doing another one coming up soon around the high school. I'm not going to talk about what that is right now. I don't know, do you have any ideas? But, so, we're trying to go through real possible scenarios, and have people feel more comfortable about what to do, how to use technology, and how to get into their proper role should these things happen. Some of us are meeting weekly right now to prepare for those monthly meetings. So, there's a lot of effort and time going into this. Administrators, school nurses, a lot of people are working hard to get this right. And we're in much better shape right now than we were a year ago, but we don't have it finished and finalized. But these meetings right now feel very valuable, and people are feeling better about what they would do actually running through these situations. So, I want you to be aware that we're doing our best to really improve our planning on We continue to have a shortage of bus drivers. It's a very serious situation. We are doing our best to adjust schedules. There's a real possibility that we will not have enough drivers, if any one of them calls in sick, to do our regular bus run. Right now, we're down a one full-time driver, meaning full-time, year-round. We're down that. We're also down part-time drivers, and we're down with temporary drivers. We just don't have people. And Perry keeps trying to encourage people to come in, offer free training. Perhaps part of the answer is to look at what we pay, though I don't think that's completely the answer at all. But, you know, I'm not saying that's not.
There's a shortage everywhere in bus.
Right. It's a very serious problem nationally. But I just want you to know, we're going to start planning on the possibility that we could be, I mean, if one of our drivers right now was to call and say, I can't come to work, we are, there's nowhere to go right now to fill that bus, to absolutely drive that bus. So, if that happened, we have to look at doing an alternate bus run that would take longer, and with fewer buses to get, so we need to have the kids and their parents know what that is, the schedules, and practice that. It's unfortunate, but I think we have the plan. So, just be aware of that.
Okay.
I also want to mention to you, this is the last thing I'll say, is that next year, our school district is going through what's called a special education audit. And every, so many years, I think it's like every five, state comes in, and they just go through your records, your files, the interviews, teachers, parents. They look at students' IEPs to see if there are any deadlines missed, any programs promised or what provided. It's a very serious and thorough, and it's a healthy thing to go through. Well, they're going to come in this January and meet with a group of our teachers and perhaps administrators, and just explain what they're going to be really looking for when they're here next year. And Jessica Clark said that if any of you find that to be of high interest, that it would be, certainly would be welcome to attend, just to kind of know what they're going to be doing when the audit kicks in next year. And again, that'll be sometime in January, I think late January, she has the dates, if you have any interest in that. Let's see.
Thank you, Howard.
Yep.
Just a brief question. On the emergency plan, I know a number of people sort of just following it. We're planning to have a public update and sort of let people know about what that plan is. And I know particularly people were interested in making sure we understand how to interface with social media that's happening, particularly during an event.
Right. Yep. Yeah, our plan is to have something public to present to you and the general public, and obviously, parents, this very year. But one of the things that we're going to say and write is that we're asking people to resist racing to the school and coming over to pick up your children. We need people to just stay home and let us figure out what to do and how to get kids to you. When parents come in in droves to get their children, it blocks the road for the police, for the fire, and for us to get our buses in. So, the tendency is for students to text their parents, saying, "Come get me." And the parents understandably want to get over there and help their children and help their neighbors' kids, but it adds to the chaos. So, we're going to be saying in here, here's what we're asking you to do, either stay home, or we'll tell you where to go and when. But yes, we've got plenty to work on in terms of communication, and we know that. Yep.
That's the issue I had covered before, I just wanted to know that we're headed to sort of answer that, probably say, this is how we do it.
Right, yeah.
I'd like to ask you a question, too.
Sure.
In reference to ELL, do you have the number of students who are in the ELL program right now?
I don't have.
And does it school? And have you guys, or the school has done demographics of kids who are not in school yet, but will be coming to school? And the question is, is one ELL teacher sufficient for all three schools?
Yep. So, the answer is, I do not have those numbers. I believe right now that our total number of students enrolled in our schools is nine, but I wouldn't want to be held to that. And I don't believe, I'm not aware that we have the numbers of students that we expect to come in over the next few years. I can ask Kathy, who is close to this, at your next meeting, to try and answer those questions for you, if you want to know what that is.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, may I have a motion?
I move we approve the reappointment of Smita Santi, M.D., as school health advisor pursuant to Title 20A, MRSA Section 6402-A.
I second. All those in favor? Item 7B, may I have a motion?
I move that we consider to approve the following policies as presented on the agenda. Does that suffice?
Yeah. Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Heather, Kimberly, are you able to just, Heather, I mean, Barbara did a really nice job at the first read, but for our new board members, maybe just a quick overview?
Yeah. The only ones that I would like to speak about right now are the medication to students and the medical marijuana in schools. And we spoke, and Kimberly, please feel free to add in if I've forgotten something, but we spoke extensively with the nurses in the schools, particularly in the high school, to come up with a very clear plan. And in regards to medical marijuana, the idea is that a parent is the one that brings in the medication. It is not done within the nurse's office. It is done in some room, some space in the office. And we didn't want to designate specifically in case, you know, if we had, if we had put in policy that it had to be in the principal's office, well, what would have happened if Principal Shedd was in a meeting and stuff? So, we left a little bit of wiggle room there. But the nurses definitely want to have no part, they're not supposed to have any part with that administration. Children are not, students are not supposed to be holding it or having any contact with that. And I thought that was a really good, clear process for that, that policy. And for administering medications to students, there's a lot of talk about the different forms that need to get filled out, and saying that they just really don't want students to have medication on them, and that they want to be able to hold on to medications. And there was a lot of conversation about what happens on field trips, and just really thorough discussions about where that, where that basic policy may find holes, and what do you do in those situations when you are off campus, or if you're at a situation where you're just looking over someplace. They did say that the, so, that's what I'm remembering.
So, I think we need all those in favor? We need a vote? We need a vote? Thank you. Next is item C, which doesn't need a motion, right? We just list that policy GBGAA dash R is up for first read only. It's bloodborne pathogens.
Is that something that you all were working probably pretty extensively with the school nurses on?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. I'm just guessing.
Right. They own this. Their fingerprints are all over.
Yeah. And it looks pretty thorough.
Yeah, that one-
It looks pretty thorough.
Yeah, we did spend a lot of time in discussion of that one. And then I think the nurses worked on it some more and came back.
May I have a question? So are, are the changes, I feel like I might have read somewhere, were they based on suggestions from the main school management? Like there was a, there's a basis for the changes, right? And they were based on changes to the, coming from the main school management association?
May I speak to that? I think the answer is yes. And I also think that there is a, a school nurses association that offers suggestions for updating all those policies. So I think it was a combination of the two.
Okay, so next on the agenda is item 7D. May I have a motion?
I move that we approve Keenan Erickson for indoor track assistant for the 2017-2018 athletic year.
My second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I know, this is lying by.
Next is item, boy, this is just a consideration of the new calendar for K. Elizabeth 2018-2019, first read only. And Kimberly and Heather are on that committee. I don't know if you want to say at this point, or if we just want to put it out for public feedback?
I think we had some, it took a little less time, I think, to come up with this calendar than it did last year. And I think one of the big pieces of discussion was based around early release days and professional development. And we decided, having had so few actual days where there was early release at the time of creating this calendar, it was back in November when we were finishing up the meetings, that we decided that it was premature to try to make any kind of changes. We need to go through this year, see how it goes, and follow up with the discussion next year once we have more input and more information. I do think that many of the teachers are taking advantage of it. There is some leeway as to how they're doing it. Sometimes, for example, the foreign language department opted not to, I believe it was go K-12 on the K-12 opportunity that the rest of the disciplines were doing, and they chose a different paradigm. And Kathy is giving them a little bit of leeway to find the way that is working best for them to proceed right now. But it's been overall heading in a good direction, so we just want to keep that moving ahead. We had some discussion about possibly starting before Labor Day, and we opted against that. And we're going to, this, this calendar is offering the beginning of school after Labor Day. There was discussion around how we have to meet the days with PAS. So PAS is Portland Arts and Technology Institute. And we are only allowed, is it five-hour days that are just-
Disimilar days.
That are dissimilar days. We're at four, I believe.
We are.
So we're still under the limit of that, which is good. And the teachers still are very wanting to have time in the schedule to have conferences during the day. They do not want to move conferences just to the nighttime. They find it too much for the night. And so we're still holding on to some of the day time for conferences. I think the big change this year, which so many people I'm sure will be thrilled about, is we've tried to make November much less broken up. And so we've got the Thanksgiving holiday, we have, and we are asked by the town to not have school during Election Day. And we decided every other year that will be important, and on the off years, it's not as important, but that's being used as conference days. We also came up with the realization that it doesn't have to be the same days necessarily for Poncove Middle School and the high school, that it doesn't all have to happen on the very same day. Because, for example, the Poncove teachers wanted a little bit later date for conferences, and the high school teachers want a little bit of an earlier date. So that for the earlier dates, if there's something happening with the schedule and they need to change it around, they can do so after conferences. So there was a lot of, it's not a huge change. I think the biggest things you'll notice is November is not so choppy. But it was, it was a very, it was good conversation, again, about trying to maximize classroom time for teachers, but also respect the idea of what needs to happen for this K-12 curriculum and for the professional development. So that's where we're ended. Is there anything else that you-
Yeah, I would just add that Jason Mandarides, the Poncove principal, was going to take on the task of kind of looking into if there's a way that we can offer some childcare support on the early release days for Poncove students.
Well, that's great.
Through the combination of potentially, because Principal Shad was also there as well from the high school, saying that maybe some of these high school mentors could come now, but that it's probably not a good idea to have just the high school students. So a combination of high school students and ed techs helping to support that childcare, right?
Yep, yeah, I think there had been a parent concern about that. So this was an effort to hear the parent concerns and try and alleviate the situation. And I feel like there was one other thing I was going to add, but I don't remember what it was. So I pause right there.
I just, I just wanted to ask, who was involved in the committee this year? Last year, I know parents were involved, were they-
There were parents as well.
Involved again this year?
Yeah, parents, administrators, Howard was there, two board members, Kimberly and myself, and Kathy Stecker was there.
Teachers from all buildings.
And teachers from all the buildings.
So maybe just mention one other thing, just for parents who are planning their summers. This plan would start school the day after Labor Day. So we want to ensure people knew that, that up to that point, that's time for them to figure out how they want to spend their summer together. And the last day without any snow days would be the 12th of June. So for every day that we lose, you simply add a day, one for one. But without any snow days, this, this west of the 12th.
Thank you for the work on the calendar.
I wanted to say that I noticed, I could see right away that there was some work put into November, and I think everybody's appreciative of that. And thanks for going back and doing that. I think that we heard especially last year that everybody was appreciative of bringing the tradition of having the calendar come through a committee. Goes a long way. So thank you.
Sorry, next is committee reports. I'll say?
Spurring.
Oh, no.
Go ahead.
We're pulling committee back in the process of starting the final draft recommendation. That's underway, we haven't seen it yet.
Right.
So that's wrapping up soon. I think that was only committee. You've been active so far.
I've been on Buildings and Grounds, and that's super fun and super exciting. We had a meeting with a few different plans concerning the cafeteria in the Poncove Middle School area and possibilities of how to make that a better utilized space for lunches and for the auditorium, the theater place, and to make it work for all students, not just middle school, but Poncove, because they have different needs. And so we're in the very beginning process of that. There were four drafts. I think unanimously, we all enjoyed the last one. And so they're going to tweak it, come back to us with more detail on that. And heading into some conversations later this week about the high school and the athletic area down by the gym, not the gym, the training center, the weight room and all of that, and trying to see how we can bring that a little bit more up to speed where it just serves our needs better. Right now, it's way too tight, so.
We're going to have a workshop on, on this in January, is that right? Presented by the architect?
Yep.
I'll just comment on the comprehensive planning committee. We met just recently last week. And closing up for now, the draft of the housing chapter, coming to a near close of the draft of the transportation. And next, next meeting will be, we were supposed to do it this past week, but the person who runs the survey couldn't come. So we're going to do it at our next meeting in January.
The superintendent search committee will have a final meeting on Thursday at 3:00. I believe we are in the lower level conference room. And I'll take this opportunity also to plug to the parents and community members to join us on Friday evening from 6:30 to 7:30 to meet and welcome our superintendent finalist, Donna Wolfram.
Anyone else? Is that it? Any school board agenda requests? Nasser and Hope, if you have any in the future, you can feel free to email myself or Heather or Howard, same with the public. Next announcement of upcoming meetings, the comprehensive plan, the next meeting, a regular meeting is set for Wednesday, January 3rd at 7:00 PM in the Jordan Conference Room. The agenda again will be transportation, possibly public facilities, and most definitely the survey results. And then on January 25th, I believe it will be here in Town Hall. The, the time is to be determined is going to be a public forum, which I really hope we can all attend.
Which is the-
January 25th.
And it's here?
I believe it's going to be here.
Okay.
I don't know where else it would be. Time is to be determined. It's probably maybe six or seven.
For policy committee, as I'm just moving into leadership on that committee, I'd like to honor the schedule that sort of just came about pretty recently. So policy committee will meet on January 23rd at 5:30 PM. And we'd like to continue to meet in the high school library. We, I believe, met for an hour and then the workshop started. So it was one evening out as opposed to an extra night out was how people were doing it. And I'd like to honor that for now. There will be no policy committee meeting in December due to the winter break.
Spurring Building Committee is meeting on the 18th in the Jordan Conference Room.
And Buildings and Grounds has a meeting on Thursday at 2:00.
This Thursday?
This Thursday at 2:00, and I'm forgetting where it is, Howard.
It will probably be in the high school, right? In the high school conference room.
In the high school conference room. So this Thursday at 2:00 in the high school conference room.
Any of Kevin, Helen, and Woldes in the next one or two?
No, I spoke to all the principals and explained that we do want to give a report to the board. Jeff said he's got a lot to talk about and to say about it. But everybody understands we're, we're coming.
Okay, so before we move on to item 11, I want to take this pause to just acknowledge the significant change in leadership. And thank Elizabeth for her two amazing years of leading this board and the district in a really positive direction. I think that you've done a lot of mending and healing, and you're going to be a really tough act to follow. So I hope that you let me lean on you from time to time. But I want to thank you so much. It's been a really joy to work with you as your vice chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Elizabeth, I just want to say, in all seriousness, you really have made my job here a lot easier by just being able to work with you. It's just been a really very accessible and helpful school board chair. It's meant a lot to me, and thank you.
Thank you. So Elizabeth, you became chair when I came onto the board, and you have just led this, this board through some amazing adventures these past two years of accomplishing quite a bit. So thank you for your dedication, your constant effort, and your willingness to serve with, without hesitation, constantly and continuously. And also, I would like to congratulate you, Susannah, for filling this role and stepping in. I think it takes a lot of courage to not have been doing it, to step into that role. So thank you, and I have complete confidence that you will do a wonderful job.
Sweet.
Here, here.
I'd like to add my voice and repeat some of the things I had said earlier at the caucus, but I think it's actually really important, particularly in a public session. A lot of what happens, the school board is, particularly at the chair's job, a lot of what we do is all public, a lot of what the chair does is invisible. We've had a lot of visible challenges and a lot of ones that were not so visible. And every step of the way, things moved smoothly. We all found a really good consensus and I think met a number of the challenges with flying colors. I think our school district is in a much better place now after two years of leadership. And as someone said to me before, it was by the stage manager, when they do their job well, nobody notices. But I want to let you know that we are, we noticed, and it makes a really big difference, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to take the, oh, am I not?
I was just going to say something.
No, I was just, I, this is my first year on the board, and you were a welcoming chair. You took time to help me kind of learn the ropes, and I really appreciated that. Never hesitated to answer any question and very accessible. And I appreciated you, you know, we, the superintendent search has been, has been, you know, a long process, and it's taken a ton of energy. And I really appreciate that you, you held us collectively to high standards that is what, what is right for the students. And I think you have the students and the schools in the front of all the decisions. I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to thank everybody for the past two years of working together. I'd also like to thank Barbara and Joe. It, it has been a tremendous learning opportunity for me, and it is, it has been a joy. And so I thank you. And I also want to echo Heather's sentiments that I have every confidence in Susannah. We have great leadership, and I'm excited for both Susannah and Heather going forward.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. So number 11, may I have a motion?
This should belong to Hope Renasser, I think, your first motion.
I motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Do you want to second that?
Wait.
No, you report, you missed your report.
We just-
So. Does somebody second?
Did somebody second?
I said.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Jeff, we just adjourned.
We just adjourned.
When no principals show up, it's very bad. Yes! We wish you-